Okay, thank you all for coming. We're gonna start out Reverend Granger. Will you start us out with a word of prayer, please? Is he in here? Well, he was supposed to be here. Okay. I see another pastor. You're up.
My Father and I have been once more again in your service, come. Oh, our power, come. Thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you that you brought us together. Lord, we ask that you bring us together with peace, love, and action. Lord, we ask that this outcome be your outcome. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. And we all say amen.
Amen. So that might not be a good sign when the preacher doesn't show up. All right, so hey, I want to welcome you all. Thank you for coming out. I want to tell you how we got here. And I want to recognize some special guests first. We won't applaud. We just want everybody to know the elected officials that are here. I know our mayors are here. Mayor Larry Means, Mayor Joe Taylor, Rainbow City Mayor Means and Taylor, Mayor Dana Snyder, South Side, Mayor Hare could not be here from Glencoe. We'll start down here Representative Gidley, Representative Lipskin, Representative Butler, Councilman Chris Robinson, President of our council, Kim Back, Councilwoman Dixie Manatra, Councilwoman Bishop Latham, who's my favorite. I'm sorry. Is anybody else here? County Commissioner, President Craig Enzer, and who else? Y'all stand up. Let's just do that for you. Everybody that's elected, raise your hand. How about that? Bob Cross, Detective Commissioner Rand. Everybody's here, okay? So this is important to all of us. I want to tell you first, we're gonna go over the speakers real quick. We're gonna try to keep this short and sweet and so we can ask questions. We've asked Senator Andrews to speak first, after me. Brett Johnson, who's an adjunct instructor, Mayor's Chief of Staff. Jennifer Weddington from Parks and Rec. Representative Rod Scott, who I served 16 years with in the legislature. And he is now working with the city of Gaston. Has a couple of outer league degrees, so he knows more than me. Ruth Moffett, our Gaston DEI Director. David Hooks, our IDA Director. Will Reed, our Gaston Fire Chief. Lamar Jagger, Gaston Police Chief. Sergeant Jacob Endrick, Gaston Police Department, Tina King. Gaston Director of City Services, Heath Williamson, our engineer. Jody Smith, who we're happy to have. He is a bond attorney. Is that what you are? Yeah. I know Jody. This is Nancy and Joe Smith's son, if you didn't know that. So we're lucky to have him back in Gaston. He's with Maynard and Cooper out of Birmingham. But he does all, just about all the bond closings for all the cities in the state of Alabama. So he'll tell us the repercussions of this. Kay Moore with DGI. Our comments from our Edgewall County mayors. Comments from Edgewall County Commission. And then we'll ask our state House members to speak. And then I'll close it. And then we'll have questions and answers that you have written, right, John? John's still with us? We already laid him on. John, you got the questions or doing? Okay. And then we'll have a closing. So I want to tell you real quick just what this means to us. And we'll get more in detail with it real quick after the speakers speak. I took office November 7th, 2022, about 100 days ago. First mayor of Gaston for 16 years. We had to live by a budget that was previously passed by the previous council and administration. And it's not a bad budget. It's a good budget. The previous administration didn't spend a lot of money, so that could be good or bad. It's good for us, bad for them. So we were lucky to be able to take over a good budget for the city of Gaston. Gaston's on the verge of a lot of growth. We're working on 16 projects as we speak. We'll let Heath go to know this is not a stress ball, it's a visual for something later. But Heath can talk about our projects. David Hooks is gonna talk about our IDA prospects that we have currently. Not to say anything about campaigns, but I campaigned when I ran for office not to do away with occupational tax. My opponent campaigned to do away with occupational tax. I thought that was a major issue in the campaign because we had to contact our consultants. And I basically told our consultants, I think that's a troublesome issue for me to try to overcome, to explain. So the end result was, we got 62% of the vote to 38%. I feel that was a referendum for the city of Gaston of the occupational tax in some form or fashion. I explained it and I told my wife. I said, I would hate to be mayor if you had to do away with occupational tax in Gaston and run that budget the way it is. So I want to tell you real quick what our budget is. I've been told you can't find your budget. It's all online. Every city's budget is online, am I correct? If not, you are welcome to come to our city and we will hand you a budget. We get audited every year. We've been audited excellent every year, Lisa, am I correct? So as long as you've been there, how long have you been there? 20 years. So we're going through an audit right now. She will present the budget April 1st. And then we'll be able to hopefully get another good audit. But if you want a copy of our budget, you're welcome to see it. We have a $75 million budget. $52 million is dedicated to payroll. You may say that's high. Well, it is high because we're having to pay for everyone that has retired prior to working for the city of Gaston. Back in the day, we, the city, whoever it was, Steve Means or Sherman or David Nolan, agreed to let the city employees come under the RSA retirement system. I think it's a great opportunity for city employees. We don't pay a lot in Gaston. I'll just tell you the truth. Our employees work and do a great job for not a lot of money. But they do get good health insurance and they do get good retirement. But we have to pay for that on the back end. So that's built into that payroll. If you take away $15 million, what Senator Jones wants to do, then we would be at $60 million. And we have $52 million already dedicated towards payroll. That leaves us $8 million to run a budget. That's impossible. We cannot run a city for $8 million. So I got a little business sense along with some of the other mayors and all that Mayor Taylor talked. Cause his bank account's bigger than mine. And I agree with that. But he's a businessman too, and so is Mayor Snyder. But y'all, let me tell you something. I have seen firsthand in the first 100 days what it takes to run a city. It's not us, it's the employees. But what they have, we just went back to the TV interview in the back of the venue. The building's leaking, it's a five-year-old building. That happens. We called a contractor and one was back there. We've got a gutter system issue. There's $250,000 right there in repairs that needs to be done to this building. But the building's making money. For the first time in the, this is be our second year, this building made almost $1.1 million. The Twin Bridges Golf Course made $1.2 million last year for the first time. So things are looking up in Gaston, but it takes money to run a city. We have 26 cities in the state of Alabama with a occupational license fee or occupational tax. We're not trying to hide our verbiage under occupational license fee, but that's what is called in the constitution. We are one of five cities in Edgewall County that has the OLF. It is, our OLF and all the other cities in Gaston, in Edgewall County are 2%. It was passed in 1962 and it has been upheld in the state Supreme Court. At Talon, Glencoe, South Side, and Rainbow City. The OLF is 30% of our general fund budget. The OLF generates $15 million annually for the city of Gaston. It provides police, fire, road, bridges, parks, rec, sanitation, et cetera. The state legislature begins their session March 7th, representatives. And ends, they hope, as early as possible. Been there, done that for 18 years. But you have 30 days, 30 legislative days within a 105-day calendar to get those days in. Trust me, I feel their pain. It's a lot of work. They drive down there on Tuesday, drive home on Thursday. Sometimes they go earlier. I know Matt used to, I don't know how you did it, used to go down, meet, then come home at night, then go back the next morning. So he would do that so he could be with his family. But it takes a lot out on them. This is not something that we want to ask them, hey, go down there and fight for us to keep this. Well, that's not what we're in this. We want to say, hey, I want to meet with y'all with the governor and the highway director about redirecting traffic on Highway 411. Let's all go together about a feel-good project and let's try to get your tax dollars back home. So that's what we want to work with our delegation for. And then we want to cover them back home. When I was a legislator and Senator Larry Means was a senator, we would never thought of trying to take revenue from a municipality. Our goal was to try to secure revenue, your tax dollars to bring back home, to give your tax dollars back to the community. So that's our state legislative session that starts, and this is when the bill's gonna be processed. We met with our senators the other day. Some people said you hadn't met with them, that's not true. All five mayors sat in a room at the city of Gaston City Hall. And we met and we tried to work out a deal. It ended in just zero. It just, it didn't go anywhere. But he did tell us this, and if he's here, he's up after me. He said he will bring every bill possible that he can to try to make this happen. We tried to relay to him, I did personally, you're dealing with people's lives. This isn't Candy Land, we're dealing with people's livelihoods. I've had police officers call me, ask me, should I quit? Should I resign? Go look for another city? No, we have done everything we can do to try to get our retention up. Recruitment videos, some pay increases, everything with the fire department. The last thing we want to do now is lose our firemen that we've gone out and hired and our policemen that we've gone out and hired. The rest of the speakers will explain what those cuts will mean for the residents and the visitors working in Gaston. What I want you to remember is all five cities will be forced to make the same cuts. South Side will have their own cuts, Rainbow City will have their own cuts, so will Glencoe and Atala. This isn't just about Gaston. If I live in Gaston and I work in Mayor Taylor's city, I pay 2% occupational tax to Mayor Taylor. If Mayor Taylor works in Rainbow, lives in Rainbow City, works in Gaston, as he did for 20-plus years as firefighter, he pays 2% occupational tax to Gaston. The city of Gaston triples in population from eight to five. So put that in your, I want you to remember that. Our city triples in population from eight to five. So we have to have police protection, fire protection for all these residents coming in, as long also does these other cities. I would imagine Mayor Snyder's city also increases in population due to old hatchet and everybody coming in from her way and working in her city. So I want to tell you this, and I'm gonna sit down and turn over to Brett. This is our tax structure. Our tax structure is made up of the lowest, the fifth lowest Adalorn tax in the state of Alabama, 2% occupational tax, and a 10% sales tax. This is our egg or our ball. Mountain Brook has one of the highest Adalorn taxes in the state of Alabama. 0% occupational fees and 10% sales tax. That's the way they run their government. We run our government with our tax structure, how I just explained. Mayor Taylor, Mayor Snyder, Mayor Means can explain theirs. But this is how we run our government. For goodness sakes, don't come in and tell us 100 days into office that we have a $75 million budget and you're gonna take $15 million away from us. Craig Ford, Joe Taylor, Dana Snyder, Larry Means, we'll go to the house and we'll be okay. It's these guys in blue and these firemen that it's gonna hurt and it's gonna cost them their jobs and it's their livelihoods of their families and our city employees. So with that being said, I'm not gonna say much more. I'll turn it over to Brett Johnson, who's my Chief of Staff. Thank you. I'll leave this ball for y'all.
Thanks, sir. Actually, on the agenda for our speakers, we have Senator Jones. If he's here, we didn't know if he'd come or not. Just wanted to give that opportunity for two minutes at the podium. Okay. So I'm Brett Johnson, Mayor Ford's Chief of Staff. As he said, I also am an adjunct instructor at the college level. I teach Introduction to American Government, it's the only class that I teach. So fundamentals of our United States system of government. So one thing I wanted to talk about today, there's another thing, two more things I want to tell you about myself. One is I am not a fan of taxes. In fact, I served on the Edgewall County Republican Executive Committee because I am not a fan of taxes. I also realize that I want police protection, fire protection, sanitation, and all the services that come with living in a municipality. So put that out there up front. So some basics about government. Everyone knows there's three branches of government, right? Legislative, judicial, executive. A lot of conversation doesn't get down to the next level, which is the three levels of government. That's because we're blessed to live in what we call a federalist system. That means that the federal government has its lane, the state government has its lane, and local governments have their lanes. So generally, national government's designed to create laws and rules that apply across the nation, to defend our nation, to promote welfare. Down to the state, they've left some rights for public education, to take care of business in that state based on that state's needs. And then our state constitution allows for municipalities, cities, and counties who have the authority in their jurisdiction to do what the people in that community want them to do in that community based on their needs. That's how our system of government is structured. This bill, if passed, essentially does the reverse of what that federalist system of government is designed to do. It takes power from the level of government closest to the people, the cities and the counties, and gives it to the state and says, we're gonna make those decisions for you, not you, your mayor and your council that live in your community and work with you and you see every day. So the next slide I want to talk to you about is the tax structure for other cities. A lot of people ask the question because, as Mayor Ford pointed out, we have an occupational tax in Gaston, not every city in the state of the nation does. What other ways do cities fund their municipal operations? Right here are the top sources of revenue for the largest 22 cities in the state of Alabama. Sales tax, that's what you all know about sales tax. Property taxes, taxes on your homes for the property value that's assessed. Fees, fines, and other, that's court fines, use fees, and there's a lot of stuff in that. Intergovernmental, which is effectively grants from the federal and state government, or shared revenue with other entities like counties. Business licenses, that's the barrier to entry as a business owner of operating a business every year in that community. You pay your business license fee. And then occupational taxes. On the left side of that screen is the average amount that cities in the state of Alabama depend on each source of revenue. On the right side of that screen, and this is a 2014 study, it may have tweaked just a little bit, is how the city of Gaston in 2014 got its revenue. So because we have an occupational tax of 2%, we're able to keep property taxes in Edgewall County, Gaston, South Side, all those cities are in the same boat. The lowest in the state of Alabama. So it's very important to make that note. So on the next slide, as we talk about property taxes, Senator Jones has publicly, in a recent news article, stated that he thinks that could help as an option to replace lost occupational revenue. This is from the same study. It shows the Adalorn, which is property tax rates for these largest 22 cities in the state of Alabama. You can see that Gaston is among the lowest, which I've just mentioned to you. What it doesn't show you, it shows we collect 15 mills, which is how they describe property tax rates. The city of Gaston actually only keeps nine mills of that. The other six mills goes to Gaston City Schools. So we actually would put us down there at the bottom three or four if you're talking about what the city of Gaston keeps for operations. To replace $15 million a year in revenue, we would have to go to 54 mills in property tax. As Mayor Ford mentioned, that would be the highest in the state of Alabama. And let me tell you right now, we don't have property values like Mountain Brook and the Stavia Hills. That would hurt. And I know y'all know that because I can see it on your faces. So the next thing I want to point to is the sheet that was in your chair when you got here. For those of you who have chairs, sorry for those of you who are standing, but we have some extras in the back we can give you at the end. Breaking down what does it really mean to me as an individual, as an average person, if the occupational tax is removed in Gaston? So the bill that was proposed last year by Senator Jones actually repealed the occupational tax over a 20-year period by .01% each year. So that would mean if the bill were passed today, next year, your occupational tax rate would be 1.9%. The year after that, your occupational tax rate would be 1.8%. The year after that, 1.7, and it goes on and on and on for 20 years. Let me ask a question. Those of you who are in the room, how many of you are retired? Please raise your hand. Okay, how many of you plan to retire in the next five years? All right, keep your hand up. How many plan to retire in the next 10 years? How many of you plan to retire in the next 15? How many plan to retire in the next 20 years? Okay. So almost everybody in this room would be paying occupational tax for the remainder of your career under the proposed bill that Senator Jones had last year. I just wanted that to sink in. You can read that and it explains the actual cost. The average is about $10 a week for the average household in Gaston. And then we'll talk about the additional costs that will happen because of the decline in city revenue in Edgewall County. So next up, I want to introduce to you Mayor Ford, talk about Representative Rod Scott. He, before he gets up here, I gotta tell you his credentials. He's the brain on our team. He is an economist. He has a degree from Yale and a degree from Dartmouth. His degree was in econometrics. How many of you know what that means? But I just wanted him to come up and talk to you for a little bit from his perspective of the impact of this legislation.
I want to thank you all for allowing me to be here in Gaston. I feel very welcome here. And I want to thank the mayor for inviting me here to work with him. We worked together for 16 years. There's really no need for me to go over the numbers and the details. What we're talking about is real common sense. We want a better Gaston for the next generation, the generation after them, and continue that process. Because guess what? The Northeast is open for Alabama. And I think Gaston is primed to take over the Northeast. Communications with Georgia, Tennessee, and over to Huntsville. What's important happened in my life. My mother and father. My father worked for United States Steel. My mother was a beautician. My father worked three jobs. And guess how many children they had? It was a total of 10 of us. So that means that they understood that they had to sacrifice today for us to have a better life in the future. I can't remember the time my father went to a store and bought some clothes. I mean, I just can't. And I used to go out with him all the time. He worked for US Steel. He really didn't need to dress. All he needed to do was to go over and up to US Steel and clean the shoebox. So that set an example in my life. So really, what it is, is they, how should I say? They spent pennies today so that we can have a better future. In a simple concept, IRA, how many people have an IRA? How many people are in a retirement plan? They save pennies today so that you could have a better future when you retire. In other words, they were not penny wise. But they were pounding interested and invested in our lives as children that they had. So they were not short-term thinkers. They were long-term thinkers. And that's where we are in Gaston. We have to be long-term thinkers. Because guess what? We're on the verge of a new economy. Now, some of us are old enough to remember the TV coming in. It was black and white when I came in. And there may be a few who are old enough to remember the radio coming in. But now we have the internet, we have Netflix. There are so many ways of communicating now, it's almost impossible. We even have Zoom, we don't have to go to meetings anymore. So our lives can be very different if we plan for our future and the future of our children. So all I want to say is, I'm glad to be here in Gaston. And I think this is the right environment of people so that we can plan for a marvelous future for our children. So thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jen Weddington, and I am the Director of Gaston Park and Recreation Department. I have been working here for almost seven years. Park and Recreation has already seen growth in our youth athletic programs, such as our youth basketball that we just completed with 128 teams. The Gaston Sports Park has seen Phase One be completed. With Phase Two finishing by the end of this month and Phase Three starting, this is over a $20 million investment. This mayor has seen the needs of upgrades of the Nakalaw Falls Parking Campground and has a team working right now to do a full rebound instead of piecing it together by using our funds that we gather from Christmas at the Falls. If the occupational license fee revenue is removed and we are expected to cut 30% of the park and recreation budget, this will be a reduction of over $2 million for quality allow programs, events, and facilities. The direct effect will be a cut of over 120 part-time and seasonal employees. We will have to close Mitchell, Raymond Hill, Thompson, and Walnut Park Community Centers. So there will be no after-school program, there will be no summer camps, and there will be no open gyms at these locations. We'll also have to cut programs such as, but not limited to, our senior program, our therapeutic recreation, our youth baseball, flag football, track and field, adult softball, basketball, and football, our farmer's market, mistletoe market, the Christmas tree lighting, and the Christmas parade. We'll have to close the sports complex on Meagan Boulevard. This includes seven baseball and softball fields, 12 tennis courts, a multi-purpose field, a walking track, and a skate park. This will also affect our partnership with Gaston State Community College when they're trying to rebuild their baseball program and their tennis one. At the new Gaston Sports Complex behind Gaston State Community College, we'll only be able to open it up for paid weekend tournaments. We'll have to close our splash pad at the boardwalk. We'll have to reduce our hours at Cousin Landing Store. We'll have to cut city landscaping, which includes James Martin Wildlife Sanctuary and Dog Park, Broad and Chestnut Streets, Highway 411, Meagan Boulevard Medians, I-59 and I-759 interchanges, Tuscaloosa Avenue, Citizen Monument, Library, City Hall, Community Centers, Miranda Park and Pond, and areas around the boardwalk at Chili and Splash Pad, our police station, fire stations, and more than 30 passive parks and walking trails. At Nakalaw Falls, we'll have to cut events like Barbarian Challenge, Art on the Rocks, Trick or Treat Village, trout fishing, and have limited days at Christmas at the Falls. We'll have to revise and limit Nakalaw Falls Park and campground mini golf and rental facility hours. We'll have to cut support for the Veterans Day Parade because our staff leads that parade. We'll cut partnerships and sponsorships of the Gaston Runner Club, Coaster River Team Trail, Independent State Fireworks, Alabama Bass Trail, Alabama Bass Nation High School tournaments, Fisher and Man Bass Tournament, and many more. We'll be unable to go out and bid on tournaments for upcoming state, regional, national, and world tournaments in events such as basketball, baseball, softball, flag football, tennis, fishing, barbecue competitions, and other great events. We'll have to limit our downtown rental facilities to only being open for paid programs on Thursdays or Sundays. We'll have to reduce our summer food service program where we serve free meals to children 18 and under in the months of June and July while they are out of school. We'll have to cut our senior nutrition program where we serve and deliver meals to our senior citizen population in the city of Gaston. We'll have to reduce or close Twin Bridges Golf Course. As you can see, Park and Recreation is not only touches the lives of the city of Gaston residents, but for our surrounding communities and tourism. This will have a direct impact on the livelihood of our park and recreation employees and everyone in the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you for being here. My name is Ruth Moffett, and I'm the DEI Director with the city of Gaston. I want to share with you today, as we all know, the city of Gaston and this new administration has come in and as we say, moving without breaks. But with this bill passed, we will come to a halt. We will not be able to continue to grow as we have been growing. The following organizations would be immediately cut to zero. That's the Bevel Manufacturing Center, Downtown Gaston, Gaston Airport Authority, Gaston City Schools, which we fund right now, close to $1 million. So the arts program, the school resource officers would immediately be cut. Gaston Commercial Development, Gaston Cultural Arts Foundation, that's the tourism, Gaston State Community College, that's scholarships, Snail Grove, Edgewall Free Clinic, Edgewall Baptist Mission Center, Edgewall County Food Bank, as well as other nonprofits. Every one of them would be cut to zero immediately. And that's about $2.3 million of our budget. As well as those organizations, Municipal Court would no longer be able to have three magistrates, but would have to go to one. With the increase of crime, that will be catastrophic for Gaston. As well, the library, the East Gaston Branch would have to close immediately. Programs in Alabama City would close. The Gaston Library would lose 13 to 14 part-time employees. They would lose three full-time employees. The main branch would have to operate on a rotating basis with reduced hours, which would affect Beautiful Rainbow, who is doing some amazing work. We would also see within our museum of arts, they would lose one full-time person. All outreach programs in the city and county would immediately cease. As well, art exhibits that bring in tourism in our community, they would have to decrease those from forty down to about twenty-four. Our transportation department would have to lay off thirteen, uh, part-time employees. Our dark services would have to cut their ability to make their routes due to, uh, the fuel. With the budgets being cut like that, and the, the FTA and the grants that we have to put up a city match for, it would put us in jeopardy of losing some of those grants through transportation. And lastly, but not least, our transportation service runs a route on Saturdays uh, for people that need dialysis. That route would have to be cut. So we're asking you today to please contact Senator Jones, and please ask him to drop this plan to defund Etowah County. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm David Hooks. I'm the Director of, uh, Executive Director of the Gaston Etowah Industrial Development Authority. I'm here to address one specific point in that, um, has been made about the occupational tax having a negative impact on economic development and industrial recruiting. Four years I've been in this job, I have never once had a prospect ask me about the occupational tax. It's not an impact to those who are locating, uh, their buildings and their facilities here. It doesn't figure into their calculations. It is just not something that they are concerned about when we're doing our recruiting. So to say that is just not true. And the same thing is, when you look at industrial recruiting and recruiting manufacturing, it's the occupational tax that allows us to have the financial resources to develop incentive packages to compete on a national level with other meta projects that are being recruited around the state. So from the IDA's director's standpoint, that's my real impact comment for tonight. Uh, and they made a mistake and said I could speak as long as I wanted to, so that can be a statement. And this is, uh, for my board members who are here, that was my IDA comment. This is my personal comment as David Hooks, the citizen of Etowah County. Again, when I got here four years ago, little did I know how fragmented this county was. The city didn't talk to that city, this city didn't talk to that city, this city didn't talk to the county, the county commission didn't talk to this person, this person didn't talk to the legislative delegation. What we've seen since November is this county that's come together, holding hands, working together. We go to Montgomery together, we go to Washington together. We are having an excellent response out of Montgomery in sending us projects again because of that. To have one elected official that is separate from every other elected official in the county is not what needs to be happening in this county. We all need to be holding hands, we all need to be working together and moving forward. And with that, thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Will Reed, and I'm the Fire Chief of the City of Gaston Fire Department. I've served this city for twenty-five years. And in the past few months, I've been more excited than I've ever been for our firefighters. The ci- this city is discussing pay raises for our firefighters. They're purchasing a one point one million dollar ladder truck for the citizens for the fire department. We're building two new fire stations. The mayor and I have been discussing building a third one in North Gaston. So things are looking up for the fire department and for the city. However, with this bill coming up, it, this is more dangerous for our public service and our citizens than anything I've ever seen in the twenty-five years I've been here. I don't want to fear hunger, and I don't want to scare anybody, but what I'm about to present is the facts. The effects of losing this occupational licensing fee will be detrimental to the fire department and to our citizens that we protect. So the loss of revenue would cause the law, would cause the loss of every fire station before. We would have four fire stations left around the entire city. Response times would increase, and response vehicles would be lessened. We would have further to go. The number of firefighters will be cut. Firefighters and officers will be cut from approximately a hundred and fifteen to approximately fifty-five. There's no way that we could provide the level of service that we provide currently with fifty-five firefighters. It's about eighteen firefighters a day. If these cuts come to fruition, business owners and homeowners' rates would increase on their insurance. The city currently has an ISO rating of two. For those of you that don't know, one is perfect, two is near perfect. We have the best insurance rate in the county. However, after contacting and consulting, it was determined that our rates would go up to a five or a six if this happens. If this also happens, some areas would be over five miles from a fire station. Your ISO rates would be a ten, which means you do not have fire coverage according to ISO. So your insurance wa- rates would be astronomical in those areas. Emergency medical services, I'm proud of our firefighters. We provide the best emergency services that money can buy. We have ALS services. We would be forced to cut the majority of our medic program out. The reason being, we are a fire department. We have to respond to structure fires, vehicle accidents, and other related emergencies. We would not have the manpower, the money, or the equipment to respond to these medical emergencies. These firefighters you see over here are the lifeblood of our fire department. We cannot do our services without those firefighters. Without them, the fire department does not exist. Firefighter morale would continue to erode, and retention and recruitment of these firefighters and future firefighters would be nearly impossible. And again, I'm not here to fear hunger, I'm not here to scare anyone. These are just the facts. Thank you for your time.
Nah, I'm Omar Jaggers, I'm the Police Chief here in Gaston. I'll try to keep it to two minutes. It's, there's two choices here. We either do less services, which means less people. For me and for you, that means less police officers. So if you want, if you get in a wreck on Rainbow Drive on four eleven, and you're injured and you're hurt, and you call nine-one-one, you probably want somebody to get there in a few minutes. Our average response time is around eleven minutes right now. Well, obviously, that's going to increase if we're going to lose officers. Then you're going to lose overtime too, because you're not going to have that either. So you're going to have to do some drastic cuts. So if you want to keep the same level of service, you've got to come up with alternate ways to make money out. So you're just moving it around, you're just playing with it. Or you just do without the services. You know, if you're all right waiting for thirty minutes, and you've been in a car wreck, and you broke your leg, you know, because the firemen are not coming either, you better hope there's ambulance ready. Because the policeman and fireman's going to be a little while getting there. You know, if somebody's trying to break in your kid's school, and they got them all locked down, and they got everything to try to keep people out, but people are always trying to get in. And I see you looking at me, you know exactly what I'm talking about. They're trying to get in. And that happens on a, on a regular basis. It's very uncomfortable because Gaston and Etowah County is starting to behave like the rest of the country. And I thought, just a few years ago, I thought it wouldn't be that way. I thought we were sort of separated from all that, but we're not. But did I have somebody banging on a glass door trying to get into a school full of elementary kids? And there's no policeman coming, or he's going to be there in thirty minutes, or he's going to be there in forty-five minutes? It just all depends on how many are working that day, and what kind of calls are going on at the time. Because we normally send two policemen to every call. So if you've got less policemen, we're still going to be sending two to every call. And that's just on a call, we don't know what it's going to be like. If it's a call where shots are fired, we're going to send three, four, or five. When you send three, four, or five, and you only got six or seven on the shift after we've done the cuts, and you're not paying overtime to, to work people in, you might be a, you might be in trouble. So small governments, all right, as long as you're going to handle your problems yourself. And then we'll come and help you after it's over. That's all I got to say.
Good afternoon, I'm Jacob Antrim, and I'm a Sergeant of the Gaston Police Department. I've been elected to the Gaston Police Department Labor Council. I was elected exactly one year ago and re-elected last month. I'm here to talk on behalf of the men and women of the Gaston Police Department. Currently, right now, twenty twenty-three, we have thirteen officers of all ranks, from officer all the way up to captain that can walk out the door today and retire. Cuts like this and budgetary scares me for those guys because those are the guys that are probably going to leave first. What scares me more than that is currently today, we have twenty-one officers with less than five years at this department. Those are the guys that are looking at, where's my future? Is it here? Am I going to leave, and am I going to go somewhere else to try to make a living for my family? That leaves us thirty-four officers for the city, many of them that, just like Chief Jaggers just spoke on. We're not going to be able to make it happen. Patrol shifts, off-duty jobs, credit unions, banks, mall security details, you name it. We cover it, we're at it, especially in just like this. We're not going to have the staff in this area. Overall, morale will shift down. Since November, I can say as a Labor Council, the momentum that we have seen with this mayor's administration, the voice that our police officers have with this mayor's administration has been tremendous and huge. But over the past two weeks, it's, it's almost kind of whittled down to fear. Your fear is our fear as well. Last thing I'll say, twenty eighteen, Netflix released a documentary on Flint, Michigan called Flint Town. Anybody ever seen it? The very first episode, it kind of sent me back. It's a city the size of Birmingham, the police force the size of Gaston. Man called for service for a robbery, robbery, robbery call, where he had already went to the hospital, been admitted, received staples in his head, went home, and s- went through three sleep cycles before law enforcement arrived to take his report. I hope that has not become Gaston. Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to add one thing to what the chief and Jacob said, and that is, currently, the city of Gaston has a contract with the Etowah County Detention Center. Most of you know that as the county jail. We pay about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year to house inmates there. With these proposed cuts, um, that contract would be renegotiated. We would not be able to pay seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. And to me, that means that some people that deserve to be in jail would be on the streets. So having said that, I just wanted to add that to what they said. I'm Tina King, Director of City Services for the City of Gaston. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about sanitation. Um, since the Ford administration has taken office, we have worked really hard in beginning to clean up our city. And y'all are going to have to excuse me, I'm going to have to use my teacher's voice as I demonstrate this to you. But we have had call after call on people who complain about dumping in our city. And it is just, it's horrendous, the number of calls we receive, and the number of people that think that it's okay to just go out and dump trash just on the side of the road. And if we continue to do this, we're going to have a city that's full of garbage. And that's what y'all are allowing, if you allow this bill to pass. If you allow Senator Jones to move forward with this, you're going to look at that every day outside of your door until you go out there and clean it up. And if you want to go clean it up, great, that's fantastic. But most people don't want to take ownership of it and go clean it up. So moving on, what else would that mean with sanitation? We also would not be able to maintain grass cutting like we have. Did I mention the rodents that that's going to attract? Now add in grass that's about eighteen inches tall, twenty-four inches tall. Those rodents can hide, and they'll feast on that. But y'all are going to go clean it up, right? Because we're not going to have the city workers to go and do it. That's what it means when you start cutting our part, our Public Works Department. When you talk about signage, Public Works does all of our signs to tell you where to go in the city. What if a stop sign is nailed? It may take two or three months to get to it. It may be the next day, depends. These are just a few of the things that will have a huge impact on you as a community member. Maybe the police and fire, that doesn't affect you, it won't impact you, but I can promise you, Public Works will have a direct impact on your life. Thank you.
I'm Heath Williamson, uh, Director of Engineering for the City of Gaston. Tax repeal would have a very negative effect on our anticipated construction improvements. We have several new projects planned, a lot of those have been discussed by other departments. New fire stations at Nakalula Falls, Rainbow Drive, new resourcing projects on Hope Street, South Elliot Street, Tabor Road, Walnut Street. Several drainage projects literally in every district across the city. As well as major improvements to the Nakalula Falls Park Campground, I know Jen already talked about, as well as corridor improvements to that whole area along the corridor. So while these ma- majority of these projects are already in design mode, we've allocated that, the mayor has, has authorized those to go forward. The important thing to note is that the construction budget would immediately, uh, be diminished should this pass. So not only that, it will, it will certainly limit the existing budget we have, but as well as our ability to secure the necessary loans and the bonds to move all of these much larger projects into a construction state. As originally intended, simply put, the plans would be shelved. Our anticipated growth will be stopped, meaning the projects won't get built. We won't have anything to build them with. We are right on the edge of some major positive improvements in the city of Gaston. I think everybody has felt just another sense of hope, energy, uh, that the mayor and his staff has brought into the city. Uh, my department, I can say, I've got one of my guys standing against the wall over there listening. Uh, we're busier than we've ever been, and it's a blast from an engineering perspective. Don't let the momentum stop. This, this is, this is just a, a great thing for the city. The momentum that we have, the projects that are ongoing, literally, it's hard to keep up with Mayor Ford, but I'm loving it. So please help that stop.
My name is Jody Smith. Um, as Mayor Ford said earlier, I grew up in Gaston. Um, my two sisters and I did. And my mom taught school for thirty-plus years here. My dad worked at the good year plant for thirty-plus years. Um, nineteen eighty-five, graduated Gaston High School. Um, I've been practicing law since nineteen ninety-five, and I've been doing public finance law since, um, two thousand and two, so over, over twenty years. And, um, also have some perspective, not only about Alabama, uh, public finance law in the state. Um, I currently serve as the President of the National Association of Bond Lawyers. This is an organization of about twenty-five hundred lawyers throughout the U.S. who do what I do. So have some perspective about how all matters like this play out, um, throughout the U.S. and how they play out in the press, et cetera. Um, also had the good fortune of being bond counsel for the city of Gaston and, um, for much of my career as a public finance lawyer, and have worked on projects like this building, the venue, which was repurposed from an old Kmart to just a beautiful event center for the city of Gaston. One of the early projects I worked on was, um, the Gaston City High School. And, um, so those are some of the fruits of, of my labor and, um, and, and many others. The projects like this, a si- city of Gaston, any municipal government can't afford to build something like this out of their current revenues, so they have to borrow money in the, um, in the bond market, in the debt markets. And, um, elimination of the occupational tax would, I think, jeopardize the city's ability to finance large capital projects like this. And you might say, well, why? And it's not just projects like the city, the high school, it, or the venue, but projects like, as I mentioned, the, um, fire stations, fire trucks. I mean, a one point two billion dollar fire truck is not something, you know, it's typically you're going to finance something like that. So why, why would elimination of the occupational tax affect the city's ability to do capital projects like this that benefit everyone? Um, the city is, issues its debt as general obligation indebtedness, and it's rated, it has a, um, very respectable rating through Moody's, which is one of the big rating agencies of A-two right now. Elimination of, you know, a tax, the percentage of the occupational tax for the city of Gaston likely would have a very drastic effect on the city's, um, bond rating. And you say, well, why do I care? Well, specifically to tie to- Well, specifically tied to the bond rating is the rate of interest that you pay on your bonds. I mean, A2 is a very respectable investment grade rating. You know, if the city had a non-investment grade or junk rating, it would be very hard to find buyers or to find them at all. It would definitely be more expensive. The other issue is that that would be in the future, you know, in the present, if the tax were greatly reduced or eliminated, it probably would invite litigation from the bondholders because they were promised by the city when it issued its debt that it would, it's put its full faith and credit behind the bonds. And if a large chunk of the revenue went away, they could argue that their contractual rights to be repaid are impaired. So just a few thoughts from a local son who has had the good fortune of working with the city and the important things that Mayor Ford and his administration wanted to do. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kay Moore. I'm Director for Downtown Gadsden. And before I say anything, you've heard Ruth Moffett say nonprofits will be the first to be cut. We understand that. It's scary. We don't like that. But that's just one of those things. So I've been Director for 15 years. Last year, the city provided 47% of the budget for downtown Gadsden. If this bill is passed, and our city funding is eliminated, which we know it will be, we are going to be unable to entice people to come from other areas to visit our beautiful downtown. If this bill is passed, shopping and dining will take a direct hit, sales taxes will decline, and that creates even a more severe deficit for the city because now we're losing sales taxes as well. If this bill is passed, fewer people will be shopping and dining, employees will be negatively impacted, small businesses will struggle, and they'll be forced to close. You probably don't know how much downtown Gadsden depends on the Gadsden Police Department and the Public Works Department. This is the only reason that we can provide First Friday, which is a huge economic draw to our city, because it's basically 80% of the people that attend First Friday are not from the city of Gadsden. I like to call it foreign money. They bring their foreign money in, they come and they eat and they shop, they buy gas at the gas stations, they spend the night in our hotels. So I think that when we're cut, we won't be here, but as you've heard, the police department will be cut, they won't be able to provide the services that we would need even if we could have First Friday. We depend, Public Works Department has been so good to help. They set us up, they clean us up after. You come to downtown on Saturday morning after a First Friday when you've had 12,000 to 15,000 people there, you'd never know that'd been a giant street party the night before. So that's what, we depend on that, and we know that's not gonna happen. So back in the 1990s, Gadsden was recognized as one of the worst cities in the United States based on the lack of culture. That's when the people got together, they formed the Mary G. Harden Center for Cultural Arts, which houses Imagination Place, the Downtown Dance Conservatory, Etowah Youth Orchestra. Now the Gadsden Museum of Art is downtown. And then they expanded Nakalula Falls, so that's added a huge quality of life for all of us. We've been the benefit of that. These venues bring in thousands of visitors from across the country, and they shop and they dine in our city. They won't be coming because we're not gonna be able to tell them that we're here. When recruiting business to Gadsden, which David Hooks, Lisa Osborne do at Etowah County, not just Gadsden, but Etowah County, the first thing the prospects that are coming want to see is the downtown area. I've been told that multiple times. This is because they're looking for a viable, vibrant downtown. You know, a downtown is the heartbeat of your community. If you don't have a viable, vibrant downtown, your community is not going to be very good. So quality of life, we've heard that, we've heard it said already, is so important to entice people and businesses to come to a small town, and that's what we are. So without this financial support of our city, we won't be able to maintain the success that we've achieved. The mayor has put together a great team. We're moving forward. You've heard positive, 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 everything's been positive since November the 7th. Let's keep that positive focus. Let's not lose that initiative. Let's, don't let this bill pass. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Kay. Just real quick, I want to remind everybody to look over here at John Moore's beautiful face. It's important for y'all because he has the slips of paper. If anybody has a question, we're gonna have a Q&amp;A opportunity at the end, we want to ask you, please write that down, flag him down, ask for a slip of paper, write it down. You can raise your hand, make eye contact with him, and then raise your paper back up. When it's ready, he'll come back and pick it up so we can be ready to ask those questions at the end. All right, next, as, yes. Yeah, he'll get the trash. Okay, as David Hook said earlier, nothing has united the mayors in Etowah County more than this single issue. So I want to invite the mayors that are here that are affected by this bill to speak. We'll start with Joe Taylor.
I'm not big on speaking. If you know me, I know firefighters know that, and they can back me up on that. But I'm Joe Taylor, I'm the mayor of Rainbow City, and we did speak with Senator Jones. I don't have a problem personally with anyone that has their opinion. I don't have a problem with people that believe in their fundamentalist views, but those fundamental views have to be backed up with certain things, and those are your core values. When we met with Senator Jones, and this is not a way of slamming Senator Jones, like I said, I always issue him his due respect, but when we met with him, he couldn't come up with a reason why we want to deal away with this. Let's just deal away with it. That sounds really, really good, except for the city of Rainbow City. This simple math for us, we're about $10 million a year budget, $2.4 million of that, and I'll just, we'll just round it down to, we'll knock it out and say it's two. If you take that and do that times 20 years, we know that our budget total is $200 million. That's easy, right? We know that we can go to 20 years, you know, times two, and we know what our occupational tax or occupational license fee is going to be. It's a very simple math, but we know when you start to remove that $40 million from that 200, that 200 is all of a sudden not very much. Now, we can then go on, and I'm not trying to give a lesson in economics because obviously I've been outsuited here. Thanks a lot, Ron. But the truth is that, you know, when we start talking about the economy and you start talking about knee-jerk reaction, I heard somebody say today on social media that Gadsden's making a knee-jerk reaction. It's not a knee-jerk reaction because in the way economy works, in the way government reacts to its own economy, which is the money that you guys send to us, we have lag time. That lag time creates a very, very touchy balance that puts us in a situation where we have to predict the future. And we do that through budgeting. And we are handed a budget. Couple of years ago, I got handed one, it was a pretty sweet budget. Doesn't look so good now if this were to pass. So let me say this. Brett mentioned something about federalism, and the USA equals federalism, you know, that's the truth. But federalism is a derivative of constitutionalism, and I think Mac Butler, he always kills me, he always gives me a lesson on the Constitution. The one thing about the Constitution is it sets this thing up so that we don't have overreach, so that you don't stick your hand into my business. This bill sticks its hand into the business of Rainbow City, Southside, Gadsden, Glencoe, and Etala. And when you put your hand in there and begin to remove something, I can't do anything but react in fear because I've still gotta provide services. Those services are critical. I'm not the guy that can just get up here and start preaching about being a politician my whole life because I haven't been. You know, I was a soldier for 17 years, I was a grass cutter, and then I was a firefighter for 25. I served this city, and this is the point, I think, that I would have to make as the mayor of another city. I'm trying to protect the city of Gadsden. Those were the people that I served, that I went out when they were hurting, when they were in the midst of chaos, when their lives were falling apart, when they were standing in the road while we put every bit of their life, we were spraying water on it. Now, if that's the kind of thing that you think you can correct by coming in and applying economic rule like the senator is doing, I hate to tell y'all, but we've gotten out of the people business and gotten into a business of numbers. There's outing numbers. Man, they can sling those numbers around like I can't do it. I had to put mine in first grade for everybody here, but especially me. But I'm just gonna tell you, when it gets down to the cutting, and I almost said it, when it gets down to the cutting, I promise you, guys, you've got leadership in place, and we know that there's tension in leadership, there has to be, because we obviously are trying to move towards something. Are we in a competition with the city of Gadsden? Absolutely. I want to beat their bridges off. But the truth is, there are certain things that I can't get from them. There's certain things that they can't get from me, but there's a lot of things that we all share, and the one thing that we share is a population that has decided to move in a different direction. A region that is strong, that is vibrant, and that, like David Hook said, we've never heard someone say, that's what's keeping us from coming to town. Rainbow City is growing, and we will stop growing at the point when you decide that you're gonna stick your hand into our coffers. The truth is very, very simple. When we get to the end of the day, we have to provide premium services to the citizens of Rainbow City, and our citizen requires that. We have 50% of our city goes out to work every day, and they pay an occupational license fee to another city. That don't bother me. That's none of my business, honestly. But think about the mayors that are coming up here and saying, we've got to hold on to this fee. We paid it. Myself, and I know that Mayor Ford's doing the same thing, we're giving our salary back, in my case, back to my schools. I give it back to my schools because our children harm themselves at a higher rate in this area. We can't figure out why. Why not throw a little money at it and see if we can't get our representatives to go to Montgomery and find us some more? That was the only reason that I did it. I want my senator to go down there and help me solve that problem. I don't need him to be here minding my business. I promise you, de-elect me, unelect me, and send me on down the road if we can have one of our state representatives come in and do the job of Craig Ford and Larry Means and Dana Snyder and Chris Hare and all of the others, Scott Reams. Just come and do our job for us, and I promise you, I've got a place to go to. It's overreach. It's just sheer overreach, and I think my two minutes is almost done. But anyway, I told you I can't do two minutes. It's overreach. It's not his job to stick his hand into the business of Rainbow City. I love to hear, I love to hear Mac when he uses this word, and I'm sure he's gonna pop it out, just to make me feel good. He always talks about the sovereignty of our state and the sovereignty of our city. Leave the sovereignty of my city alone or fire me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor of Southside, Dana Snyder.
Well, Joe always shows me up. I do not talk that long, I'm not a public speaker, but our budget is a little over $6 million a year. We don't have 8% maybe of occupational tax, which is $600,000 or so a year in our budget. That provides our SROs for our two schools, that also provides some of our sanitation services, and definitely the increase in the police and fire that we're trying to do right now by building a fire station. So I am with every mayor here, everybody here. I think that Andrew Jones needs to keep his nose out of our business. And we did all meet together the other day, and pretty much he made me mad. There's one thing I can say that I regret probably in the last 10 years, and that was supporting him as our senator.
I have to remind the next mayor, we are not on the Senate floor, all right? So two minutes for Etala Mayor Larry Means.
No way I'm gonna speak two minutes, I'm telling you, I'm not a public speaker, but I can't go for two minutes. And let me tell you what, he did make her mad. I didn't really know her, me and her best friend, I'm gonna be on her side today. I saw a side, I didn't know her. Thank you everyone for coming out, and y'all do need a haircut. Some of my good friends have told me, and that's the ones back there that the light's shining on their head, they told me that. But my hair cuts, my hair hasn't been sick, but I said, as long as I can still grow hair, I'm going to. No offense to him. I'm not gonna be as nice about the senator from Cherokee County as I've heard here tonight. But again, let me say, look at this crowd. Mark's probably gonna be passing a plate here in a minute, I guarantee you, that or somebody gonna try to get elected anyway. But I thank all of y'all for coming. What a crowd. You know, I said, it might be 10, whatever there is. Craig, good friend, he pulls all this together, he gets that energy. I couldn't hardly handle working for him right now, I'm telling you what, but I appreciate what he does. But we did, back when the senator from Cherokee County, that's why I don't refer to him every time, because he's not for Etowah County, that's for sure. First year he started all this, when he first got in office, this is not his first rodeo in this deal. And I called him, I said, you know, I'm an old man, let me give you an old man's advice. And by the way, I called Representative Butler, and I apologized too, Dana, I made a big mistake that election anyway, and he was very kind, and I appreciate you being that way. I said, before you introduce, he had 20-something local bills in county, it was going after everybody. And Craig and I both spent, and Mac knows this, and Representative Lipscomb, when you got a local bill you're thinking about, go sit down with those people and talk to them about know what you're doing, because if you don't, this right here's gonna happen. I've been there on both sides, and I told him that the other day when we were in the meeting, I don't mind, there was nothing to say, we couldn't say what was on the meeting. I've been on both sides. I had never seen any House member, senator, go after cities like this and start trying, you're supposed to bring them in money, not take money away from them. He says he's fundamentally against occupational tax. That's his privilege. And he said, you know, this is making people pay to go to work. I said, you didn't mind voting for that gas tax, but they gotta go put Gadsden card to work. Anytime, we know this by now, anytime you say something like that to him, no response, no response. He has no response. He cannot defend that. And David Hooks is right, David helped us get a $58 million cook's plant there, never mentioned it. I've been doing this, I've been around, I'm not trying to say I'm smarter than Andrew Jones, I mean, excuse me, the senator from Cherokee County, I said I wasn't gonna say his name, but I've been in more meetings than he has about that, he can say what he wants to. So I called the mayor of Tuskegee, you saw where they just got the big plant, 2% occupational tax, never mentioned. They tickled to get it down there, just never mentioned. And I just say, and he's just, I mentioned this the other day in the meeting to him too, I said, why don't you just come against Etowah County, you don't leave them alone. I said, you think sales tax are regressive? Oh yeah, they're regressive. I said, why don't you go to Cherokee County and try to get that sales tax weapon in cities? No response, no response. I've never seen a guy that seems like he's just against Etowah County, and he's supposed to be representing us, he won Etowah County. I, excuse me, Matt, I endorsed him in 2018, he won big over there. I apologize again, I'm sorry. Oh, did you? Okay, well, that's good, that's good, I didn't make that bad of a mistake. But anyway, I'm so sorry, I did, I've just never dealt with anybody, I've dealt, you know, Phil Williams, everybody knows how smart and hard-headed he is, but he would sit down, he'd call me anyway and talk about things. This guy has not, before that meeting Tuesday, now y'all had a little meeting that he brought up there, and let me say, it backfired on him, but he has never sat down with us about this right here. Can you imagine that? He's gonna take my budget's about 11-something million, this is 1.8 million. Now, he took that out of my budget and said, what's gonna happen? We're not talking about letting people off people, we're talking about talking to people who've cut jobs. We're talking about talking to people, cutting jobs. And look at the police and fire, let's say, let's give all of them a big, a big check out. And every city's like, like Mayor Ford's here. You can't get policemen, you can't get firemen. What are you gonna do when this happens? You sure not gonna be able to get them. And I thank you all guys for what you do every day, every day. And, and, and I'm trying to think of something else I can say bad about the senator from Cherokee County. I spoke to him in pancake there, that doesn't count, I guess. So anyway, um. I'm trying to say what I have to say. I knew I read something else I'm mad about it, but I can't think of what it is. Anyway, and I'm like, Joe, I didn't, I didn't have anything personally against it, but I got something personally against it. This is affecting my, my city, your city. And here's the one thing that I can say about this, that this means more to me than anything. We never disliked Gadsden or Rainbow City or anything, but we just did our own thing. One thing they say when something bad like this happens, it brings people together. This time, we sat together last, at lunch, and Dana was out of town. We're together, we're dug in. He's texted me that several times, "I know you're dug in, I know you're dug in." We are dug in. And he messed with the wrong bunch on this right now. John, not too much minutes up. Okay. Let me say, what we just now passed, I called a special meeting at three o'clock before I came over, we passed a resolution, of course, against what he's doing. But here's the crying shame of it. I had to go, we hired two lobbyists just a few minutes ago. Forty thousand dollars, that's a lot of money for us right now. It's a shame that the city has got to go hire two lobbyists to fight one of their own, their state senator. I mean, I never thought of that during, I know I get fired up about this, but I'm, I'm pissed off about this. I just, sorry, man. But I mean, it is the thought of it as much as it is what he, you know, and listening to him the other day, and he laid his paper corner. I'm taping this, I wouldn't dare use it against y'all, but I'm telling you, yeah, right, we're supposed to believe you. But again, guys, whoever you're talking to, you know, of course, I played that twenty, that two percent for twenty-four years, it's still playing. But you know how I looked at it? I used the roads, streets, sewer, water, everything to come out, to shop there. I didn't mind it. I mean, nobody likes taxes. I don't want any taxes either. But we have to, like Joe said, we gotta have them to exist to run a city. And we sure can't take something away. I'm done. Thank you for having me.
Next up, we have from Etowah County Commission, the chairman of the Etowah County Commission, Craig Enser.
Well, that got me a little fired up too. I go back to speaking to this is when I think, well, Larry and Sherman and some of the other mayors, we, we've had to do this, we've had to do this before. We've had to do this four years ago on another bill that was introduced, that we all had to sit in here and fight again. We sat on the courthouse steps and fought him. So now this is now the second time. So sorry to say, I'm Craig Enser Jr. I'm actually, I'm the president of the county commission. I'm up here for District Six, not for the county commission, just for my district, which encompasses Glencoe, Rainbow City, and the city of Gadsden. And so I have talked with each mayor. I've been with each mayor. I'm here in support for each mayor. I can go back and say that in the last four months with Mayor Ford, Mayor Joe Taylor, with the help of others, and Dana, and Larry, and the other, other six or seven that are here, for the first time since nineteen eighty-four, the Etowah County Commission has joined the Industrial Development Authority. We are funding that authority along with Rainbow City as well that's coming on board. It's the first time since nineteen eighty-four that's happened. We continuously have been going to Montgomery to recruit businesses. If you take away one tax, it's gonna have to come from another place. That's just the way it is. Or you're gonna go cut all the services and all the things that we've been told here before about City of Gadsden, along with the other cities that they, that are gonna have to cut if you do that. City of Gadsden is the largest. So when we listen to the city of Gadsden, think about what they're gonna have to do, it just bleeds down. It also bleeds down to, to the county commission because a friend of mine said this today, is, is, it's kinda like having, it's having two, two or three or five unemployed, unemployed kids. The county's gonna have to step in at some point and go help them out. We can't just sit around, the county commission can't sit around and just let it happen. We can't, we have a less budget, we have a, a third of the budget of the city of Gadsden. The county commission has a twenty-three million dollar budget. So everybody thinks the county is the bigger and, and we do everything. We are all over the whole county. Well, we do, but we wanna get one percent of the sales tax out of everybody. If there's ten, it goes one, one county, four state, and five local and the ones that are ten. We get one percent. And we have three hundred and seventy-five employees in the county, with the jail and, and, and our deputies and our other staff. So at some point, it might not affect us totally because we're not involved. We don't have an occupational tax. But when we have five different municipalities that are gonna lose these funds, it's gonna take effect on us. And we're gonna have to do whatever we have to do to come in and help. And so the other thing that I go back to, it reminded me when Larry spoke, was that four or five years ago, when we had this same problem, we, we're here again and it's a total overreach. I know y'all have heard that before, but you gotta understand, a state senator, in my opinion, along with representatives, we hire, we, we elect them to go to Montgomery to represent our interest. Our interest, everybody in this room's interest. So if we, if we elect somebody to go to Montgomery and say, hey, work, 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 build relationships, do everything you possibly can to make a deal here and help this city over here to get something back for here. Get us a road project, get us a downtown project, get us a grant, whatever it is. And then come back and say, look, I can get this, I can do this. Can you match money here? Yes, I can twenty percent match that money. Please go back to Montgomery and get us some more. That's what they're designed to do. Our job is to take that money, use it wisely like you've been, like y'all have elected us to do. Put it in each one of our counties and in our cities. As a county commissioner that has three of the municipalities that this bill affects, I can tell you one thing I haven't done in five years is tell them how to run their city. And I don't expect the senator to tell us how to run our county. Thank you.
Next up, we want to invite members of our House of Representatives, our state representatives in the delegation to come up. First up, we'll have the representative for Gadsden, Rainbow City, and Etowah, Matt Butler.
Thank you so much. It's great to be with all of you tonight, great turnout. I gotta say, my friend Rod Scott is a home run for not just Gadsden, but Etowah County. When, when Mayor Ford called me and told me he was hiring him, I was just like, that is one of the smartest gentlemen I've ever had the pleasure to eat dinner with. He's, he's brilliant, he's gonna be great things. But I, I am Matt Butler. I was raised here, grew up here, graduated high school here, married a local girl. We've raised four children. We've been in business here thirty-eight years. Matter of fact, I actually carried the newspaper Downtown Gadsden in nineteen seventy-four when I was eleven, and actually carried seventeen papers to city hall. If you wanna do the math, I'm fifty-nine now. But I have the distinct privilege of, of representing Gadsden, Etowah, and Rainbow City. And what, what David Hook's mentioned about the positivity, the community, the spirit that is coming from our mayors and council is phenomenal. I've never seen that. And there is no way that I am going to run over these guys. We're not working cooperation with whatever we do because we've got to work and keep the team together like we're going. I have just never, being here and, and being part of government off and on for a long time, I've never seen the spirit of cooperation, positivity. Gadsden and our community's been through a lot. Not with the COVID, but with Goodyear, we've taken a lot of hits to Still Plan. But the, the sense of spirit and positivity that's radiating from all of our municipalities, from our county commission, everybody literally enjoys each other and is working hand in hand in one direction. If we were to run over you guys, that would stop right then. We cannot do that. Let's, let's work in community and in cooperation and the spirit. Man, let's go after, Mark and I were in Montgomery the other day and we learned our workforce participation is at an all-time low. When they, when they holler, we have record unemployment, that means nothing. That means how many people are looking for a job. We have got only fifty-seven percent of the able-bodied people that are participating in our workforce. Forty-three percent have just stepped out of it. We need to get them back. I know the mayors told me about some things that are on the horizon that sound incredible. The, the way to really do anything is grow the economy. And we need to continue that if, if, if we could break generational poverty. And a lot of things we've been involved with when Craig and I were in the legislature, one of the things I was most proud of is when Airbus came. We did the dual enrollment career tech training. That literally, when Airbus came, they needed nine hundred welders. We didn't have them. But we, we did it where you could be in high school and be dual enrolled, whether you wanted to be a plumber, electrician, carpenter, whatever. But they could literally graduate high school and go straight to their career. And the goal was always, as a ten-year school board member, was to get our students either college or career rating. We programmed this week for a workforce development center that is state-of-the-art, that's going to impact this community. Let's keep the positivity going and let's work together. Thank you so much.
Representative Mark Gidley.
Matt went over his two minutes. You know, something I noticed a while ago, I just, I just wanna point this out. I noticed John Moore, the joy on his face as he poured that out on the floor. Now, we're gonna see if he's gonna clean it up, right? Well, I am Mark Gidley, I'm representative for District Twenty-nine. It is a joy to be here tonight. I have something else tonight on my plate, something I had committed to quite some time ago. And, but I, I canceled that to be here tonight because I felt like it was extremely important to be here as representative for one of our representatives. And if you live on the right side of Nakalula Drive, going up Nakalula Mountain, and on the far end of North Gadsden, that's where Max's district goes, up toward Thompson School, you live in my district. And one of the things I wanna say is, is, I won't, you know, I wanna hear from anybody that, and what your opinions are. I'd love to hear from you. Because I, what I said as I was running for this office is that unless you have a heart to serve and run for a representative or whatever the position is, senator, whatever it is, and don't have a heart, whatever the position is, and don't have a heart to serve the people and to work to do what's best for the community, you just need to stay at home. And so that's what I hope to do. Now, tonight I come because I needed to be a lot of information. I appreciate the information that's been shared here tonight because that's what I've been trying to do is gather information. Because what is the number one goal? The number one goal is to do what's best for our city and best for our people. And that's my commitment to these mayors, to these city councils, to our delegation, is to work together to do our best to do what's best for our cities and keep it growing. You know, I love Gadsden, I didn't grow up in Gadsden. Don't let anybody know that I grew up close to Glen Williams, but please don't hold that against me, okay? But out of Hope's Club, but I love Gadsden because I've lived here, I've lived just outside of here all my life. I love to hear my daddy tell stories about Gadsden because my daddy was born right after the turn of the century. And he used to tell me about riding a two-horse wagon over the railroad trestle before there was a Broad Street Bridge. Some of y'all didn't know that, even, even that kinda thing existed. There are a lot of history in this city, a lot of growth in this city. And as Matt said, there's a lot of wonderful things ahead for this city. And I wanna do my best to do my part to serve and to make sure we make that happen. Thank you for letting me speak here tonight, I appreciate it.
Best dressed, Representative Craig Lipscomb.
There are three things I know more than anybody else in this room. That's how to dress well, how to grow a beard, and how to do architecture. As a matter of fact, I have a practice just about a mile from here down county Gadsden. Proud to have a practice there. I could've gone anywhere in the United States. Graduated from Auburn University and that was one of the most difficult processes I've ever gone through in my life. I finished with a bachelor's degree in architect, in architecture. And I could've gone to, could've gone to Charleston. I could've gone to Boston, had a lot of places to go, but I came back to Gadsden. I grew up in North Gadsden. Our family, we slowly migrated south and eventually landed in Horton again. So I live in the county. I'm surrounded by all the municipalities, they can all touch me. And, you know, I'm at a distinct disadvantage here because I don't have a PowerPoint presentation like everybody else does. But, you know, the thing about, about Etowah County is very unique. We're the smallest county in the state of Alabama, geographically speaking. Every municipality touches another municipality. You could put one foot in Rainbow City and another foot in Gadsden, one foot in Etowah and another foot in Rainbow City. It just happens. Every municipality touches. That makes us a very unique community statewide. Anywhere else you go, you have to travel miles to get from one city to another, but not here. And what that means is that we have a certain community that's unique. It's a community where we have to collaborate and we have to work together. You know? It concerns me when I hear about something that would negatively impact my community. If, as, I have a business in Gadsden, but I represent Southside and Glencoe and Rainbow City. And one of the things that I promised when I was elected was I'm gonna make sure that the Southside Bridge gets built, and we are. But we can't if we don't have something to put into the pot. Right? So we have to make sure that we, we protect what we have and grow what we have in order to do bigger and better things. Because it's gonna take a collaboration of federal and state and local dollars to do these big things that we've decided that we wanna do. It's not my place to dictate to any municipality how to operate. They're held accountable by the people who elected them. And so I think it's important that we, as was said previously, stay in our lane. I don't like when the federal government tells the state of Alabama what to do. And I don't think that our cities like when our, when our local legislators tell them what to do. I'm on the local legislation committee in Montgomery. And I never see a bill coming there that has not been brought to a legislative body by their local people. It rarely happens. And so that is a, a unique thing that I don't think should be happening right now. The one thing that I've also noticed is that the best-looking elected officials in the room are all named Craig.
Amen, Craig. Okay, so I'm gonna end real quick. I know we've been in here and it's six thirty-three, we're trying to end earlier, but I just wanna say a few things that I was gonna say and I'm gonna make them quick. Let you know a little bit what's going on here. When we hear that somebody's gonna take funds from our city, I was accused the other day, I overreacted. We overreacted as the mayoral group to meet with the senator. Let me explain something to you. When you say, murmur that you have the power to take fifteen million dollars from a seventy-five million dollar budget, we go in DEFCON five. We're gonna do everything possible to stop what you're doing and explain to the people why we need the monies that we need. The next thing is, we are looking at building three new fire stations. We're also looking at rotating a fleet with our Gadsden Police Department. They're driving cars twenty-something years old, some of them. Some of them don't have enough vehicles that we have to have the new police officer sit behind a desk because we don't have enough vehicles. Unacceptable. We're talking about rebranding our image for the city of Gadsden. If you notice the G up here above us, we did have a city seal with Emma Sampson statue on it. We had Gulf State Steel, which is out of business, Goodyear, which is out of business. You look at Huntsville, Tuscaloosa, Oxford, everybody goes to a new brand. We're rebranding our city. Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Avery, I can't remember who was on the committee the other day, and Pastor Councilmember Steve Smith. We're on this committee, we're talking about rebranding our city with a new seal for a new image for Alabama. So I wanna say this, when cuts happen, and unfortunately I was in the legislature with Matt when Governor Bentley cut out three mental health hospitals in the state of Alabama. That may not speak anything to you, but let me tell you something. It speaks a lot to our first responders. When he shut down these mental health hospitals and these people started walking out on the streets, they're walking into everybody's community. Now, I, I debated on saying this, but I noticed the Gadsden Times reported it the other day. We had a situation the other night on the Etowah border in Gadsden in a hotel where a gentleman took off a toilet lid and beat a woman to death and then wrapped her up in toilet paper and set her on fire. Then he just got out and he started walking.
Then he just got out and he started walking and we caught him in Atala thanks to Atala PD. He said she was a witch, so he decided to set her on fire. People, if we cut our police force, this could happen in your backyard. The mental health is a major issue in this state, and not only in the state, but in our cities and our county. And it's something that we have to address. And we were looking at putting more monies to mental health with our probate judge, Scott Hassel, his direction, trying to help these people find a place where we can get them recovery and try to get them on the help that they needed. The next thing is, could you imagine calling nine-one-one and they say, nine-one-one, please hold? Now, that would happen. That can happen. You heard Jen talk about Parks and Rec and I said, my God, are we gonna cut that much? Well, let me tell you what we did. We told each department head, we're losing thirty percent of our budget. I want everybody to present to me thirty percent cuts within your department. I did not know unfortunately what all Parks and Rec does, not just talking about the police and fire, but our, every department that we have. I had our insurance department, that might be assigned. I told you all we're losing money. Somebody hit the lights. But let me tell you this, uh, we, uh, on Christmas Day, I'll tell you, our insurance department said they're gonna have, they have two employees in there. She said, I don't have anything to do but to lay off one employee. So, I mean, what do you do? The next thing was Christmas Day, it, right in front of my house on Rainbow Drive, there was a shooting. It was in the county because the Maverick gas station and the other gas station, I can't remember what it is, the Shell are in the county, but we have Rainbow City Police respond first. My brother comes in and I was sick and he says, there's a shooting on Rainbow Drive. I said, oh, okay, I'm headed down there, I think. And I go down there and I get in the medium and I look and there's a guy standing in the middle of the road, mental health, holding a pistol, firing shots at individuals at the gas station. Rainbow City Police is to my right. Edwah County Sheriff's Departments are to my left. Gaston PD is flanking them from the rear. And Rainbow City Police shoots a beanbag, I believe, and takes them down. And they treat them with respect. I said, I want to talk to the individual who just, who did all this. I went up to the car, they pulled him out and said, sir, please tell me, what's your thought process? He couldn't explain because he was a mental health patient. He used to be in a mental health facility, but he got thrown out. So that's what's walking around our streets and why we need first responders. The second part of that story is, think of the unity that took place there. You had three police departments. They came in to solve a situation and it was in a county, but in a city and we had a neighboring city support us. We have an agreement with all fire departments that if there's a fire that takes place, we back each other up. We have an emergency situation with our police departments. We all back each other up. That may cease and desist if, if we lose these, if we lose these monies. We have a homeless situation. I visited the homeless with our police department. We went in the woods. I said, I just want to see what's going on. Y'all people, we have a major homeless situation in the city of Gaston. It's a fine line that we have to address our homeless situation. A lot of these people, some you can help. You need resources to help these people. If you cut out thirty million dollars out of the budget, like Kay Moore said earlier, they're nonprofits, I hate to say it, they gotta be the first to go. Any idea of creating a homeless situation for the whole county, coming together and working together is gone. Let me, so the other day, Rainbow City is, uh, working on the, uh, mega cycle plan. They have an MOA memorandum of understanding with everybody, they're running, they are paying to run the sewage and the water line from Rainbow City all the way to the mega site. So David Hooks, who's now the Edwah County IDA, which is, and no clapping, but I can tell you, it's a huge deal that all municipalities have one industrial development person. I can tell you story after story when we go in. I can tell you story after story when I sat in the governor's offices, my eighteen years as a legislator, and we had a prospect come and they said, so who do we call? The, the person over here, this person, or this person? And I thought, oh, God, you know, I don't know who to call. But for us to have one person that looks out the interest for all Edwah County's important. They asked me, they said, are you concerned about the mega site out there on Fiki Nine? I said, absolutely. What's good for them is good for us. What's good for Dana is good for Craig. What's good for Larry is good for Dana. I mean, that's the way government works. And then you heard Craig answer or someone say earlier, this is the first time that all mayors, county commissioners, everybody at Edwah County is getting along and getting and trying to do what's best. And you'll see the fruits of all this taking place in the next four years. We have energy in the city of Gaston. We have plans. Uh, we're dealing with nine prospective, uh, industrial prospects coming to Gaston. We're gonna break ground on three of them in the next two months. Some have five employees, some have forty. We're also in the final of three states of a major industrial plant coming to Gaston, Alabama, which can employ three hundred and twenty jobs. So I was hesitant. I was hesitant on saying this, but we're in the running with two other states. It is not, has anything to do with animals or birds or chickens or, or anything of that nature. So it's a, they're good paying jobs. They're, the pay range starts at forty-five thousand all the way to eighty thousand. So just figure it out. We're under NDAs, we can't talk about it, but it's a viable prospect. All five mayors are united. We have department meetings for the first time in the city of Gaston every, I went, every Monday, right? At ten AM, we have all twenty-five department heads, every Monday morning, city of Gaston, come in a room and we all sit around and we go around a room and we talk about what's best. You would not believe the problems that have been solved of, hey, Lisa, what can I do over here? And no, you can't do that. Then Howell speaks up and then says, no, wait a minute, I can handle that. I'll go get that, let me handle it. And I just sit there and I'm like, God, this is amazing. You know, this is what we've been needing, all because of these employees have come together and shared their ideas. If we had thirty percent cuts, I'm gonna show you on a board in a minute. We, I will show you about a bond. I talked to Ken Funterberg on the phone, who's a bond, what do you call him? Underwriter, a very wealthy underwriter. Uh, but he's a good friend of all of ours and we love Ken and his wife's the president of two-year school system, J.F. Ingram. And I said, Ken, let me ask you some numbers. I'm gonna throw some numbers out at you because we just got back from Washington DC. The first time a mayor, staff in Gaston has gone to Washington in a long time. And we had four or five people. We had one congressman at our hopes, ex-chief, ex-Alabama representative, uh, his staff person here. We went up, we had meetings. We flew out, I think at three. We left, uh, the insurance place at three AM. Brett was ten minutes late. And then we got to the airport and, uh, we took off and we started having meetings at seven o'clock, nine o'clock, eleven o'clock, one o'clock. We met every congressman in Alabama, just about. We met every US senator from Alabama. We met Department of Transportation, Pete Buttigieg's office, Department of Transportation. He talked about rails and trails that could connect South Side, Rainbow City, Atala, Gaston. We bike trails and how, how that's not a far-fetched ideal. However, we need two million dollars in matching money. I said, that's not a problem until this bill comes up. So there's a lot of possibilities here. We've visited two cities. We've been to Huntsville. We've been to, uh, Coleman. We're headed to Tuscaloosa, Prattville, and we're going to other cities to see what they're doing, to see what's going right. The ISO rating, I do know a little bit about insurance. If you think you're gonna pocket, and here's one of Jones's arguments, if you think he's gonna pocket, he says, you'll be able to take so much money a, a year if we do away the two percent occupational tax. Well, number one, for us to continue services, not to the point where we are now, we're gonna have to raise revenue. So you're gonna pay one way or another. The next way is, is that he's sitting here saying, I'm gonna tell you something that he sent a mayor today and he said, I'm sorry, I did not mean to send this to you. Am I right, Mayor? Yeah. And he said, uh, he said, oh, well, I guess you can see it. So when you call him, this is the response you're gonna get, so I'll probably have to change it up. He says, a fifteen manual, a fifteen million dollar annual hit to Gaston's budget. Try seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Cause he's saying he's gonna spread it out over twenty years, ten years, whatever. Correct. That's correct. That's fifty, that's twenty years. He's gonna take seven fifty from us every year. The occupational tax will be phased out. I have proposed we decrease the tax by one-tenth of a percent each year a unit is phased out. That's less than one percent of the city's budget. Don't forget they're taking two percent of your paycheck. For the average household in Alabama, that's more than a thousand dollars. He's right about Alabama. He's not right about Edwah County. And Edwah County is about four hundred and thirty dollars. So after you pay taxes, do the math, you're gonna be around three hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars. Well, if we raise your garbage fee, we raise your avalourum and we go down, you're gonna pay more than three hundred and fifty dollars. That's not our, our desire. So I want to show you one thing before I leave, before you leave. And this is what, Brett helped me here, Vanna. So he's talking about offering a statewide bill and the legislative delegation understands this. You want me to put it back, Mike?
Whatever you want to do.
So he, this is legislature one-on-one, not for y'all. These are the twenty-six cities about that have the occupational tax. He offers a statewide bill. Then he comes in, you mark them off. Then he comes in and guess what? We've talked to the mayor of Opelika. He said, not no, but had no. Is that bill gonna pass? His legislators, Joe LeVorn, Vern, who married a girl from Hope's Club, who's a good friend of mine, he said, Craig, don't worry, we're gonna amend the, amend the bill and take us out. Y'all do your own thing. So he takes that Opelika. I've talked to the representatives in Mountain Brook, Javel Wagner and some of the House members. They said, well, they're at zero now, but they said they're not gonna, they're not gonna take away their ability to raise the occupational tax. Then we talked to, uh, the mayor of Tuskegee and we talked to their representative, Pamela Warren. She said, oh, no, that ain't it. So they're gonna go down and amend it. Each city's gonna go to the microphone and amend out their city. So then what you have is a statewide bill with local implications. It's a statewide bill that everybody in the chamber gets to vote on except for, except for Edwah has to say so. So then we gotta rely on our three House members to go to the microphone and threaten them with their life and says, if you vote on this bill, then I'm gonna kill your local bills. That's not what we want to ask them to do either. So that hurts them, that hurts their local bills that we're asking them to sponsor to help us. And then it gives them a bad image with all these other cities. This isn't the way government's supposed to work. Number one, we think it's unconstitutional and we plan on doing what we need to do to protect the sovereignty of our city. So I want you to understand that. The last thing, yes, he's saying it's gonna take seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, but it's compounded. I want you to think of that. So it's seven hundred and fifty thousand year one, year two, he's taking seven hundred and fifty thousand, but it's also taking seven hundred and fifty, what we would have had the year before, two-point-two-five million, on, 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 on. If you compound that over twenty years, is, is that fifty-seven? Fifty-seven million, a hundred and fifty-seven million, five hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Now, think of that. That's what we're gonna be penalized for, for trying to grow the city of Gaston. So if we grow three percent, we lose one percent. So then I asked the, the underwriter, what if we said, we're gonna take our fifteen million dollars, which we can't do, but what if we did our fifteen million dollars and we were just gonna do a thirty-year bond with a payment every year of fifteen million dollars? What could we borrow? Today, on a thirty-year bond, fifteen million dollar payment a year, we could borrow two hundred and thirty million dollars. Now, imagine what we could do for the city of Gaston for two hundred and thirty million dollars. There's a lot, there's some big aggressive plans that we're looking at. I'll go ahead and tell you. We're looking at changing the whole spectrum here in Gaston. We're talking about moving four-eleven. We're talking about building three fire stations. We're talking about a new fleet for police vehicles. We're talking about pay rates for employees. We're looking at new libraries, renovating libraries. We're talking about redoing our trolley system because it's not up to date to pick up people like I see over here who met with me who said, I can get a ride to First Friday aboard Nakalula Falls. We're changing the sphere in Gaston, Alabama, to make it a better place to live for all of our people. This would put us in harm. So. You're a host now, I've talked to him, but I want you to see where we're headed and what we're doing in Gaston. So y'all, this today, we're gonna take questions real quick. This today couldn't, it did not happen because of me. We were just invited. It happened because of staff and our city employees realized the importance of this. And it happened because Jody Smith drove up from Birmingham after he just flew in from Texas and he said, I'll be there because this is important to our cities to be able to do what we're doing. So thank you, Jody. We want to thank everybody that spoke tonight. So John, we'll start with questions with you.
So, um, we had a lot, but we're not gonna go through them all. We took about five or six that were probably the important ones. Uh, Robert Hunter from Gaston, he was asking, is Senator Jones suggesting an alternative funding plan for this bill? Or is this pretty much, he said, it's not.
So, Joe, you want to answer that?
Yeah.
Come on. No. There you go.
Uh, Beth Hyatt from Gaston, she's saying, is there any chance the trolley or the trolley system will be affected? She says she actually has to have her transportation.
One thousand percent. Uh, I hate to say that. Where you make cuts, you gotta make cuts where you can. The trolley system would be affected because going, we have to come up with matching monies for the federal government. And I say, Lisa, nod her head, which we could not afford. So it would cut out our public transportation. Rainbow City, South Side, Atala may not have the public transportation as we need, but you heard someone say before, we had people that have to go to dialysis. Well, I don't mind paying two percent occupational tax if the people in Gaston need a ride to go get dialysis. I think that's the best we can do. So unfortunately, we'd have to make those cuts.
Uh, Randall from the Clubview area, he says, how much will I save if this actually passes? How much will that?
So I think I addressed that. And if you take the average, uh, income for Edwah County and you take the two percent, that's one person in the household, you would save about four hundred and sixty dollars, I think it was, Brett. You take away taxes, it's around three fifty, three hundred dollars a year. Now, keep in mind, you get to take off of your state income tax that you pay on your OLFT now. So you get a benefit there.
All right, uh, Ken from Rainbow City had one for the fire chief. Uh, what percentage of your calls are medical versus fire?
Currently, currently we said sixty-five percent of our calls are EMS calls. And when I said I would cut out making EMS calls, that's not including vehicle accidents, cardiac arrests and stuff like that. The calls that we would have to cut out is the calls that matter to individuals, the lifting assistance calls, the calls for aid with their smoke detectors. I'm not saying that the cardiac arrest doesn't matter, but we run far more calls. These ladies and gentlemen over here do run far more calls for medical assistance as far as just going out and helping someone than true emergencies such as cardiac arrest.
All right, uh, number one is Glenn Williams from the big city of Hope's Club. Uh, well, so what is the chance for this act passing?
So Glenn, good question. One is, I think we kinda got a feeling from our House members, they're gonna support their mayors, so a local bill's gonna be dead because every member of the legislature of the House delegation is. I'm not speaking for any, uh, but I think they sent a message today that they're gonna support their cities they represent. They're like me, I don't like it either. Uh, but, you know, taxes are a necessary evil and I'm gonna tell you something about Dana Snyder. But a statewide bill could pass. That's the danger, what I just showed you on the board. Now, all those other cities are gonna fight them. Gaston has hired a lobbying firm, Finney Getty. Uh, how much is it? Seventy-eight thousand? Eighty-three? Eighty-three thousand dollars that he's cost us already at Atala. We've all agreed to put money into other lobbyists to do whatever we gotta do because we're in DEFCON five, but a statewide bill could pass. We're going down to Montgomery, meeting Governor Ivy, Bill Poole. Rod and I used to hang out with Bill Poole. He's the budget, well, he was the budget chairman of education. Now, he's finance director for the state. And we're hoping if it ever got to her desk, she might veto it. So there is a chance.
Uh, Morgan from Gaston, his wife for Hooksey, uh, has the occupational tax hindered our ability to attract, attract new businesses. Thank you, Governor, about you.
I would say right the opposite end, that without the occupational tax, we don't have the capacity to put up incentive packages to recruit new business at all.
So I'll say the plan that we're looking at, we're in the final three, competing with Tennessee and South Carolina, we're using the OLF fee to build the road and infrastructure to the plant as an incentive. You take away that, we have nothing to give them.
Uh, Jeff from Gaston wants to know, uh, with Andrew Jones voting for the largest gas tax, why is he wanting to do away with the occupational tax?
Ask Andrew. I don't know. That's, that's politics. It's politics at its worst.
I'll finish with this one. Jamie from on the Knocklola Mountain wants to just kinda, I think you already answered it, but wants to make sure that Mark and Matt and Craig are up to the challenge of killing this bill. You guys, a good question.
So I gotta remind Mayor Taylor, Mac Butler's ours. He's partially yours. Uh, but, uh, but we're, we're excited about our House delegation, Mayor, Senator, I mean, Mayor, yeah. Come here and speak in, in here, because I can't hear you on the internet.
The last thing that he said to us when we walked out of the room, if you remember, he said, "I think I'm gonna pass it this year, but if I don't, it's coming year after year." And when a guy threatens you with that, I say, "Promises you with that." So this is not over in one year, so we gotta be ready.
So I'm gonna leave you with this. Mayor Snyder said, let me tell you one thing, I did a mayor's minute, we're trying to use Channel ninety-nine more often, so please look at that. There's a YouTube channel about it too, to get information out. And I was doing a mayor's minute and I was having a Mardi Gras Fat Tuesday with our Minister of Music and JT Harrow and they said, "Take that video down." And I said, "I thought I did pretty good." And it said, "Nobody loves taxes more than me." And I was like, "Oh, no, take that down." And I was trying to say, "Nobody dislikes taxes more than me." Uh, so nobody dislikes taxes more than me, I can promise you. Uh, but the other day, we're meeting with Andrew Jones and Mayor Snyder said something very, that I understood. She said, you know, "It's hard for people to understand why you have to pay taxes." I get that. Because when I was in the legislature all those years, you, we passed a one percent sales tax for the school board.